Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I call to order the meeting of our public work session for today. And before we get started and move into the meeting, I want to acknowledge certainly Senator Lucas in her presence for being here today.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
In addition, I want to acknowledge Speaker Don Scott for being here, as well as Delegate Cliff Hayes for being here. Thank you all for joining us in this very important meeting discussing our state legislative initiatives. I don't see Ms. Sherri Neils. Ms. Neal here?
Ms. Neal is not here today, but Mr. Wright's going to pitch hit for her. She had some medical issues and had to leave early.
No worries then. With that in mind, we do need to call the roll. So I would like to, at this point, ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
President.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Mr. Tillage.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
President.
Mayor Glaver.
Here. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
With that in mind, Mr. Carter, sure?
Thank you very much.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Welcome distinguished guests. We really appreciate you guys taking your time to be with us today. We did have a presentation scheduled for Ms. Neal, who is our representative that takes care of this, but she had some medical issues today and had to leave. Have a quite capable city engineer, he's going to step in and take her place. So without further ado, going to ask Mr. Wright, if he is ready, please take the podium.
Evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Senator Lucas, Delegate Scott, Delegate Hayes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, here to present the 2025 City Charter Legislative Initiatives. This follows on a series of meetings that we've had over the course of the summer, specifically with our state delegation in July, along with our council liaison and the city staff. So here's the overview of the topics that'll be covered. And I'll get right into it. So there are four city charter changes. Two, the first two, the recall process and the non-interference charter changes are to align the city charter with existing code. And then the second two are related to disparities of discrimination in our local contracting practices, the second of which authorizes the city manager to take certain actions to make sure that our processes are being defined. Then there's a legislative request, is reintroducing of a bill SB 588 and HB 1207 as it relates to housing and people of color, trying to ensure that past criminal infractions don't discourage them from being able to get, being able to get housing when they're looking at applicants. And the next are a number of budget amendment requests under several CIP projects, as well as the street maintenance fund and then economic development initiatives. So there's money in there for the jail renovations, sanitary sewer pump stations, predestined water transmission main project, which basically comes out of the treatment plant there in Suffolk, distributing water to all the customers in the city of Portsmouth. Neighborhood project, a road project that's important to the Navy, SIPSA, South Norfolk Jordan Bridge, and the city of Portsmouth, Wrightville, Elm and Victory Intersection, and some additional corridor improvements. The additional funds for industrial revitalization fund for the Innovation District, as I mentioned earlier, street maintenance payments, renovations for the Olympian Sports Club, facility that has historical significance. And then there's budget language for several economic development initiatives. Then there are positions that we'd like the delegation to take for support, regional and statewide policy, public issues, as they relate to transit funding, the Marcus Alert System, removal of barriers to use of technology to address crime, housing and workforce development opportunities, removal of that SOQ cap to improve public education, funding methodology and funding through K-12 education initiatives to increase and expand child access, childcare access for military and civilian families, funding to build a birthplace of American Trail, restoration of state funding for planning district commissions, especially HRPDC here Support to reappropriate and increase funding for the Virginia Department of Marine Resource Commission for derelict vessels, increased funding for historical African-American grave sites, and then firearm prevention, a public health crisis in America initiated by the Surgeon General does support the recommendations of that policy. Then to oppose any acquisitions by VIG, of VIG by the Department of Virginia without replacement cost revenues of the city of Portsmouth, any state mandated exemptions to local option sales tax without a viable replacement source, and any state limits placed by the local authority over management of school districts, reduction diversion of state funds and resources intended for local public schools to fund charter, college partnership, laboratory schools, or other state initiatives of this nature. And so lastly, we get here to our next steps. Your meeting here tonight, where you discuss the package, and then hopefully City Council adopts it, their regular meeting. On the 18th, Governor presents his proposed budget. And then you have January dates where Congress starts, General Assembly starts, and then the 10th is the last day to file budget amendments. And then for City Council, the BML Legislative Day at downtown Richmond Hill. With that, I'll take any questions to my best.
Is there any questions by either our delegate, or our senator, or staff?
Looks like y'all have a very aggressive agenda here. It's like about $90 million plus, not including what you're asking for with toll relief and some other, some budget items here around what you call in public policy positions. But reality is also some funding to us to know too.
Yes, sir.
So I like the aggressiveness, but I'm hoping that as we move through this process further, we'll be able to narrow down what the priorities are.
Yes, sir.
Because if we can identify what's first on the list and then work it down, obviously over the next couple of cycles, hopefully we can try to do our very best to address some or most of this in light of the fact that we had a chair of the Senate finding some appropriations here. And I think I got a little bit of say in the House between the both of us. I think we can do some things to try to deliver more, even though we've already delivered a lot this last cycle to Portsmouth.
And we appreciate that, yes.
Especially towards the toll relief and some other things, but we can do more. And Delegate Hayes is a champion. He serves as a vice chair on appropriations as well. So I think we can deliver some of these items, but we just need to prioritize them, what's the most pressing right now.
Yes, sir.
If we can get to work, because this is going to be, some of this will be a heavy lift for us, but we can get it done. That's my view, and I'm sure Senator and Hayes.
Right. I was thinking along the same lines. As a matter of fact, I bought my binder from GAKR yesterday. We had the GAKR meeting, which is the Governor's Advisory Council on Revenue Estimates, and we had all of these business people from all across the Commonwealth and beyond. And everybody chimed in on what they perceived as a forecast. And after looking at that and, of course, meshing that with what our own prospective finance staff, appropriation staffs came up with, we know that most economists are forecasting that the newly elected federal government will increase prices with higher tariffs, tighten the labor market with their immigration policies, and increase the federal deficit with tax cuts. And for all those reasons, Virginia needs to be prepared for those changes by forecasting conservatively. And so when Sherri Neal came to me with the package initially, and I looked, first thing off the bat was $36,350,000 for jail renovation. That was just one. And when I went down this list and looked at the list that all the other members of the Senate came in with, everybody wants their budget amendments passed.
Of course.
And I'm not going to use any shipyard language, but there's no way with a snowball, all this stuff is going to happen. I mean, I'm just going to be upfront with you and frank. We have one member of finance to come in and, two, from the Richmond and Rico area. And the budget amendments that they put in would have almost taken all of the money that we had. And so with us having to be very conservative about the way we approach our spending, I mean, we can't just go out and just fund everybody's budget requests, as you all know. But as the Speaker said, we're going to do the best we can to try to whittle these down, starting with maybe the most pressing one. I'm looking at $36,350,000 for the jail renovation. That's a big bite right there.
If I could add, the $36 million is really the reimbursement that we paid for the jail? It's not necessarily for jail renovations. That's what we paid. The city took bonds out to pay $36 million. Actually, the bonds were $45 million to buy the regional jail. So that $36 million is what the reimbursement we would ask for, for the cost.
Okay. That, the clarification I needed to hear.
Right. And in addition to that, it's my understanding that, and I've heard the sheriff say this and other leaders, the state does provide some level of funding for if we did a new jail.
That's correct.
I don't know if it's 25% or 50% of what the price of that would be. Our ask is, from a priority standpoint, is if we could get some relief on that debt that we incurred as a city, it does two things. It lowers our debt. In addition to that, those dollars that we free up, we could then earmark that for some of those other priorities that you all may not be able to fund at this time. That's number one on a consideration that I'd like to share.
So is that your highest priority? Is that what you're saying?
I think so, because we've incurred the debt, and if we could free up some of that debt, it would allow for us to do some of those other priorities.
Okay, that, okay. Now you're beginning to make it make sense, because when, you know, when we're presented with this without any real clarification, it appears that these are the monetary requests that you're making.
Understood, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I'm Mr. Mayor. And that same, on that same note of the jail project, is this the latest number? Because I recall seeing somewhere also that the sheriff had mentioned something about another 10 or 15.
Well, I'm not aware of the sheriff's request, but I know that we borrowed $45 million. It was $36 million to buy the jail. We put in an additional cushion for repairs to the physical plant. That's what those additional dollars were. So I don't know where the sheriff's dollars are coming from. I haven't seen that in detail, so I can't really speak to that. But we can certainly get that information.
There is some renovations that's necessary. There's some stabilization, first of all, that's necessary, not just to renovate, but to make the jail actually usable in its present state. And then there's some things that we need to do to actually bring it up. One of the things that we're trying to do is determine where we're going to put our youth. We need a youth detention center in this area. We need it primarily, you know, my focus naturally is going to be for Portsmouth. But if we can do some things to help other people naturally want to do that, we've talked to the Department of Juvenile Justice about them maybe being a partner in this, because there's going to be some major renovations that's going to have to happen to the jail, because as I understand it, you can't have adults and juveniles housed in the same jail. So we're going to have to do a lot of renovations to that jail to make it appropriate for that youth. So that's where a lot of those other dollars are going to be spent, in trying to do something so that we, right now, we're taking our youth all over the state of Virginia.
Understood.
Because that's a problem. We don't have anywhere locally for those youth that are being detained. So we have to do, and that is really a pressing issue for us, to get something done so that we can really take care of our youth and get them back closer to home.
And if I could add just a couple of more that I had had, certainly that last bullet point, the total elimination of tolls, we appreciate what you guys have done at the state level to provide toll relief, and we just want to keep that out front. I know there's talk at the regional level of some different strategies moving forward, but we certainly would like to keep that front and center toll relief as a priority for our citizens and businesses in the city.
Well, Mayor, you know the $101 million that I, budget amendment that I put in this year, that money will be available in January. I'm not sure if a lot of people know that.
Yes.
Okay. I think there may need to be some PR on that to make sure that the citizens are aware that they will be able to go and apply for, for the 101 million that's already in the pot, that's available now, that they can do that in January.
Yes, ma'am.
And of course, you know, this has been something that I've been working on every last 10 years. And so at best I can, I will continue to try to get money in the budget to make sure that we'll bring it down. If we have to take it bite by bite, we'll take it bite by bite. I'd love to take it and wipe it all out at one time, but that, and it's, right now, with all that we're facing, that doesn't appear to be in the future, but we'll do the best we can.
And another, I just want to piggyback, I mean, the Senator led the effort to get the 101 million toll relief for this, for the region. But we've done a lot this last year. That was a lot in this budget for, and it's important that Portsmouth draw down on it and make sure that we don't get passed by. I mean, we put $2 million in, I mean, we put career in technical education here in Portsmouth.
Yeah.
We did $28 million for our SAVR Communities Program, but we have to draw that down. You know, another $26 million over the biennium. We did $3 million for youth development programs, including $2 million and another $1 million for some community-based gun violence prevention program. So we put hundreds of millions of dollars in this region. Now it's up to us to leverage it. Now, it sounds like we have some infrastructure issues that we need to address.
Absolutely.
Regarding with public safety with the jail and making sure that we, there were some of the sanitation issues. So I'm definitely wanting to focus on that. I think we just have to stay focused and prioritize those things that we can do now. And if getting some of these resources will free up some of the dollars that you have, that you can then knock down some of this stuff on this list, then we're happy to have a conversation on how we partner to make that happen.
And you know, and I, you know, I have one concern that with all of the dollars that we bring in each session of the General Assembly, obviously, the information is not getting out to the citizens of the city. We do a lot every year, but we see people on the streets like, well, what have you done for us lately? Like hundreds of millions each year. And it's almost as if there's no recognition for what we've done. And I'd like to see us do a better job of telling our story about what we are accomplishing. That, I think that would be helpful, and then maybe people will have a better appreciation for what your local and state government is doing for you, if we tell our story.
Absolutely.
That's not being told.
And if I could add, the last thing, last ask, which is, you know, it's an ask, and on the priority list is certainly not the highest of priorities, but as you all know, we have a award-winning program here with our Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Program, Starbase. And I know that that organization is in need of a no other mobile classroom. And perhaps through freeing up some of these other resources, either you all could consider funding that at the tune of $300,000, or we could consider funding that as a city with some of the savings that might come from some of these other efforts. Just wanted to put that out there as a ask, and certainly any consideration would be That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments?
My focus, of course, is going to be on the budget, because after that presentation we received yesterday, and of course, Mr. Speaker is a little bit more bullish than I am in terms of how we're going to bring in revenues, but I think overall, I think we're going to be just a little bit conservative until we see just what's going to be passed down to us from the federal government. And I'm, we just don't have a clue yet.
I mean, the only, the only concern that we have is, I mean, we're going to have a surplus right now. We know we're going to have some surplus. But we also have to be prepared for a reduction in the federal workforce with the new president coming in, who said that he will reduce federal workforce out of the DC area and remove it and move it to different parts. And that's going to have a big, huge impact on Northern Virginia. And as goes Northern Virginia, you know, if Northern Virginia gets a cold, the rest of Virginia gets, you know, gets COVID. And so at the end of the day, we need, we need to make sure that we're prepared for that, and hopefully here in Portsmouth, we'll be prepared. But we're definitely going to take this priority list seriously and try to do all we can to help, help deliver on some of it. I think we've been listening to you guys about the impact of the toll. We've done more. I think the casino and some of the other issues that we've done here, we have some success stories to say, as I always say, Portsmouth is winning. And I think we have a responsibility now to bring on, to bring on the rest of the things online that we can do here in Portsmouth.
Well, while we do have this surplus, and of course, we do have a lot of, we do have a lot of other bills in the drawer. There are always, there are always bills that need to be paid. But while we have this surplus, of course, we've been meeting all day in Richmond, starting seven o'clock this morning. And one of the things that we're, we're hoping is that out of this surplus, we'll be able to let our working families across the Commonwealth understand that we feel their pain. We know the cost of living is hamstringing a lot of people. And if we can, if we can try to get a rebate back to them, get something back to, back in the pockets of our hard work in Virginia, we're going to try to do that too, while we have this surplus. Just want to pass it on. That's something that we worked on today.
Good. Good speaking.
Dr. Whitaker, if you have the floor, sir.
Yes, Senator Lucas and Speaker Scott and Delegate Hayes, just want to also, in addition to the budget initiatives and the priorities with that, there's also the state legislative initiatives that we have been discussing in regards to the charter changes. And I just want to make sure that you are clear, because there's going to be a vote later on today. That vote, I don't know the numbers that are present, how that will go forward or not, but there has already been a consensus by a majority of council that agrees to put forward these charter amendments. Two of them you already are familiar with, the recall and the non-interference language, which you realize it went forward through the General Assembly, and there was a last-minute tactic by Tim Anderson that caused the bills to be killed. So with now the influence and the dynamics of the House and the Senate, that's something that should be able to be pushed through regardless of what that vote looks like tonight. Also...
Well, once we get the bill and we drop the bill, it's, once it's in the hopper, it's our bill.
We have some drafts in place. They've all been drafted. We're just waiting to see what, what the council does.
Okay. Well, I just, I just want to...
Because once the bill get filed, it belongs to the body. It's ours.
Okay. So the prefile, is that what you're speaking?
Once the bill, once the bill is filed.
They're in draft now.
They're all in being drafted right now.
We have, we have not passed the deadline to drop the bill.
I would think you would want to do the will of council.
So the...
But I thought that's what we were doing.
We wait until they vote, they're going to...
We have a vote tonight on all the agenda items.
Oh, I see.
That's why we have a drill. That's why I hate to...
What I'm, what I'm presenting is that it's not always the vote of council that determines what goes forward in the General Assembly. And tonight, it may end up, if everyone is not here, may end up being a 3-3 vote. And so I just want you to know that it has already been a consensus vote of council that has been presented to Ms. Neal for these items to move forward. And the other issue up here that has taken on much concern has been this item number three that's on the charter change, and that's the language dealing with the authority for council to remedy evidence-based disparities and discrimination.
What's that?
That's, that's on page four of the outline. And I just want to remind our delegation that this has been a long process that we've been going through from the school board side all the way through council, trying to get in a minority contracting policy. What has been happening is that from council to council managers, that as far as any type of emphasis and any type of practice that's being put forward, it has not been consistent to the extent that our last disparity study showed that we contracted 500 million and less than 1% went to minority contractors. What this language does is to help put in place something that will survive councils and city managers. If changes to occur, it would have to occur at the charter level. And so I think we need to put some substance in place so that we can protect these minority vendors from having to go through these councils and manager changes and emphasis or lack of emphasis being placed. So I would hope that this would be pushed forward as well. But you're saying that it is already in the pre-draft stage. Is that correct?
That was just, purpose for that was just to see, you know, in case however council comes out or decides, then it would be in the hopper, so to speak.
It's rare that we move forward in a local charter change committee if the, if the locality that's in leadership doesn't want it. I'm just going to tell you the truth. If the locality comes forward and say, we don't want it, then it's unlikely to move forward. It's up to, we, I, I mean, I just think it's a philosophy of the, of the, of the General Assembly not to get into hometown squabbles, even though we represent here, we want folks to come in and either say, hey, look, we want this, this is something we want for our city, when there's a fight, it's hard to move it forward. We've done it, but I say it's rare. And I've seen it happen in my short time. I'm sure the Senator's seen it.
No, no, it is, it is rare. And I, and it, case in point.
I'm looking forward to seeing how y'all vote.
Case in, case in point. All of the years that we had, didn't have a majority vote for the casino, I wasn't able to go forward with it because it was not the will of the majority council. So it took me 20 years, 20 years to get a majority vote of council to move forward on the casino bill. So Speaker's correct. Typically, unless there is a consensus of the council, the legislature understanding that we don't have a majority, we got to have a resolution. If we don't have a resolution from you to move it forward, then whether it's our locality or not, the other legislators normally don't honor that.
And I'm just hoping it's one, two, three, four, I think it's five I see on here.
Yeah.
So hopefully, uh...
That one did get already got.
So hopefully, we'll, we'll know, five, you know, after y'all...
Are these being voted on tonight, tonight?
Every vote on tonight, yes, ma'am.
But if it's, if it's going to reflect what happened at the last meeting, it's going to end up 3-3.
Well, that's the will of council.
And so if, if Councilman Barnes doesn't come, so it's going to end up 3-3. But a consensus had already been put forward, and I don't see how...
We're going to have to have a resolution coming from the council.
Right. That's correct.
So, so whenever you move, there's always a resolution.
That's correct. Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Going back to number three, I think our city attorney had briefed council on that and expressed an opinion on the role of council, reference number three.
Tell me more, Councilman. What's your, what's your question?
Well, my, my question is, I guess, the role of council, being an enforcement body and being able to render remedies, you know, we're a Dillon Rule state, and that's certainly not the role of council, certainly not the role of council according to the Commonwealth of Virginia either. We're an advise and consent body. We don't render penalties and remedies. If anything, that's a legal function, not a function of council.
Are you referring to the request and authority of the city manager to collect data? I just want to make sure we're tracking.
Yeah. And the remedies-based remedy evidence-based disparities and discrimination, I read into that, that the council would be asked to render a remedy.
No.
A remedy can be a penalty, could be monetary.
No, this, what this charter change Councilman does is allow for the charter to provide the authority for the city manager to collect the data from disparity studies.
Yeah.
And the disparity studies are the document that provides the resources for potential corrective action for disparities that are noted. And so I think it's really a play on words, but what you've said is correct, but I don't think this is embodied in this particular charter change.
It's not, it's not intended for council, for this council as a body to remedy anything.
Yeah, no, it's not. Not at all. Yeah, no, it's not, not at all.
No.
And I think when you brought that up-
The wording, the wording could be interpreted as that-
The summary does appear to report that, but I think you brought that up last time and we addressed it.
And, and also Senator Lucas said a little while ago that word doesn't get out of all the great things that, monetary great things that have been done to help the working men and women of Portsmouth. I dare say that the $101 million of toll relief, I guarantee you, if you ask most working men and women on how to apply for that, most of them are clueless.
Wow.
Because you, you read about it in, in the media, maybe at one time shortly after the adoption, but from that point on, people just aren't aware of it. Most people, working men and women are busy doing what working men and women do, and that's work. So they don't have a lot of time to research it. So it has to be an easier way to get the word out on how to apply for that money. Because we got, we've, we've got people, I've, I've got people in my office that owe almost $8,000 in back tolls. And what that does, that handcuffs them from getting state tags, a lot of other things. And, you know, giving them a little bit of toll relief is a drop in the bucket. So more, more needs to be done to tackle that issue, because you can get behind automobiles in Portsmouth or the region, and you see state tags that are expired two or three years ago. And that's, that situation's not going to go away.
So you're saying that not a good enough job is being done to advertise how to apply and receive those funds?
That's number one. Number two, specifically, something has to be done with, with the back tolls that these people incurred mostly during the pandemic.
That's, that's part of what the, the funds are for. It's for them to make application to pay those back tolls. And also, and, and specific in the legislation, for people who are at a certain age, they're going to be able to get 14 free trips per week. All that was written into the legislation. So how we get the word out to the public that the funds are there, all you got to do is walk into the office and fill out the application and sign it. And if you, if you are resident of the city of Portsmouth or Norfolk, you meet the criteria, the funds are there and available for you. I don't-
Can I step in this? One thing-
What else could it be?
One thing that we will do as a city is make sure that we help get the word out to our residents about these opportunities that have been presented to us through the efforts of our legislators. We want them to be able to participate and, and seek relief. So we, we'll do what we can to make sure that the citizen of Portsmouth is aware and can take advantage of what's already been laid out. We thank you for that.
Because you can broadcast on your station, right?
Yeah.
And that's one way.
We'll use all of our media outlets to ensure that the citizens of Portsmouth is aware of what's happening and how they can be a participant and, and make sure that they have the opportunity. So we will do our share here in the city. And let me also say that we really thank you guys for the work that you've done for Portsmouth. Absolutely. I, I can see the work that you've put into Portsmouth. Yes, we have a pretty aggressive list, because we have some pretty aggressive things that we need to get done in Portsmouth, but we don't expect you guys to do everything for us. We want you to know what our needs are. But we will be very appreciative to work with you and, and take whatever we can get because of the work that you do.
Portsmouth is the home of my birth. If I could take, if I could take this list in there and just go get all my stuff first.
We understand that.
I would do that, but unfortunately, as chair, you know, I, I got 14 other people on that committee who want their, uh-
Absolutely. You know, the Bible says, "You have not because you ask not." We're going to ask.
I've been here, this is my fifth session coming in, this is my fifth session, and this is the most aggressive that I've ever seen Portsmouth be since I've been here. And so I'm grateful that y'all have let us know, because you guys are seeing the day-to-day, the city infrastructure.
Yes, sir.
And see this, it's kind of, I'm glad, I wish I'd, you know, some of this stuff. But now we have some result, we, we have some resources and we have some means to make it happen.
Yes, sir.
I think between those two things, we can probably get some of this stuff done. And other than that, you know, I thank y'all for, for meeting with us and letting you know, and letting us know your legislative priorities, and hopefully today we'll have a, a good idea of what, what y'all plan on asking us to put forward as your legislators.
Thank you.
We're in a good, we're in a good position to, to deliver on a lot of this. It's just, I mean, we can't do it all at once.
I understand.
But, but we're in a good position to be able to deliver on your request, barring what's coming down across the Potomac.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, legislators, for being here tonight. I think we can attribute a lot of this work to the legislative committee who came together as a first this year with Councilman Vernon Tillage and myself as part of the liaisons for the council. So we have been presenting this information to the council since June, July of this summer, working on this with Sherri Neal and, of course, our staff members, looking at the information, drilling it down. And it's been presented to our council members several times for them to make a decision to put in or to add in. So I'm a little taken back that the council is now going in on this day or at the last meeting to restrict some of the options that had already been agreed to with the charter changes. And then the surprise that we get today with the $300 million for, or 300,000 for our STEM program. Of course, we support our Starbase Victory program, but most of us around this table had not heard about that ask until just now, when we have asked our council since June or July for their input on these items and to make deliberations, to make changes, to accept what we have asked for, to add in an additional thing. So we at the last hour, and we do appreciate your willingness to come today and to be able to do whatever you can. But I believe a lot of the work and a lot of the aggressiveness that has been put into this package and into this ask is because we decided to come up with our legislative committee who has been working on this for the past six months.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions from our colleagues? A quick question. I'm noticing on the regional and statewide policy positions, second item is referring to the Marcus Alert, and I know that there's been some question about after the General Assembly passed this legislation authorizing the Marcus Alert to be implemented in our localities. Apparently, there was some lack of funding that followed the, the directive, if you will. Do we know what that number looks like per locality or? Manager Carter, do you have that information?
I don't have that information immediately available, but we can get it for you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. Well, once again, Senator Lucas, Speaker Scott, and Delegate Hayes, we are grateful to have you with us today and enjoyed the conversation. We look forward to working with you throughout the upcoming session, coming to visit and seeing you on a periodic basis, just so that we can all understand what we can do together. And I wish you and your families a most safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Same to you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you guys being here.
We're going to recess for a few minutes, and I think the, the idea is to transition into the chamber to continue our work session. So we'll take about five minutes, and at 5:45, is that, is that what I'm looking at at the clock? 5:45, we'll reconvene the work session. Thank you. We will now proceed with our, our work session at, Mr. Carter, sure you have the floor?
All right. I am. Looking for my police chief. Oh, he's hiding. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor. A couple of people, I guess, still trying to get in, but this is a presentation on Portsmouth United. That is an initiative that's led by our local police department, and they are responding to the consequences of what's going on in our local environment. They've come through with a process and a program that we think will be beneficial to all involved, and ask Chief Jenkins, if he will, to please give us a presentation and where we are, how we go forward. Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Carter. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak on Portsmouth United once again. So Portsmouth United was initially started as an idea in January of this year. Since then, we've taken the initiative and, and want to put to the forefront that Portsmouth United is a city-led initiative. It is not intended to be a police department-led initiative. This is a city's response to how we address gun violence. Earlier part of this year, the Surgeon General noted that the epidemic of gun violence was a public health crisis. And if you understand what that means, is that the Surgeon General doesn't generally give advisories on, on things of, of minor issues. When the Surgeon General puts his stamp on something that is considered to be a crisis, then basically he is arming all of the community, all of the, your educators, all of your professors, your academics, your cities, your government, everything possible to address this issue. And so him taking this monumental step to shine the light on the epidemic of gun violence and beginning to shine, to put forth, bring together some, some individuals to actually address the root causes of gun violence is what this initiative is, is surrounded in. So the purpose of Portsmouth United, the purpose of Portsmouth United is to create an ecosystem that is going to be a comprehensive approach to how we address the epidemic of gun violence and violence in our city. And our goals here are to reduce the violence, obviously, within the city, to strengthen the community relations, and improve access opportunities. Now, each one of these has additional information that goes along with each one of these, these steps, and I'll, I'll talk on some of them a little bit more as we move forward. But we're also, part of this is implementing steps necessary for creating justice reforms on how we police communities, but also ensuring that those individuals that are wind up incarcerated, that we provide a path back for them to become good citizens and have an opportunity to contribute to society. We also want to look at providing comprehensive services. When we look at places where gun violence plagues our community, how much service, services are actually in that community to support those individuals, to be able to limit the potential of them being re-offended or becoming victims or becoming the next offender of a, as it relates to gun violence. And then long-term community transformation. Those things that we have grappled with in some of our neighborhoods for, for decades, how do we really begin to go in, address the root causes of the issues there, whether it be poverty, low education, lack of jobs, all of those things to be able to transform that community? So by focusing on the five pillars of prevention, intervention, enforcement, reentry and reforms, we're hoping that Portsmouth United and this cohesive ecosystem of public safety will be our vehicle for transforming the city of Portsmouth. So the, one of the big topics that we often deal with is funding. And so the state, through Department of Criminal Justice Services, allocated three communities, Portsmouth, Norfolk, and Richmond, a substantial amount of money to, to address some of our issues as it relates to the root causes of, of gun violence. And these were to, for us to look at and begin to implement new practices, not just some of the same things that we have traditionally done in law enforcement, buying equipment, buying, you know, hiring, overtime, things of that enforcement. But also, but more importantly, let's look at how do we, how do we actually address some of the issues that we've done longstanding, with the understanding that we're not going to be able to necessarily arrest our way out of crime. We want to make sure that we're giving those individuals the opportunity to be successful. So this was part of that funding opportunity that DCJS provided us. So they were very specific when they gave us this criteria. This was not Stephen Jenkins's criteria. This was DCJS and the state of Virginia's criteria as to how and what, what we would spend dollars on in support of CBOs, nonprofits, and again, forgive me, CBOs, community-based organizations, nonprofits and things of that nature. So they must provide, the service must have provided one of these categories. They, it was either for credible messengers and violence interrupters, connections to education or economic development, after-school programs and mentorships, case management for trauma-informed, mental health care, and other wraparound services, and finally strategies to build trust among law enforcement and other community stakeholders. The one caveat that we wanted to ensure that we added, that any person that was going to receive funding had to ensure that that funding was spent here in the city of Portsmouth. We, oftentimes, we've, we've seen and, and talked to other folks that received funding from other localities and some of the nightmares that they had with challenges with people coming from others, other areas and then taking those dollars back. So we were very direct in, in the MOU that we put forth and had signed by those individuals. So what we did is we put together a micro grant. And as a result of that, we opened up opportunities for the micro grant to fund organizations. We put out this information to well over 100 individuals who had expressed interest in applying for these micro grants. That information went out on June 17th, and it actually closed on June 28th. We require all of those organizations to present a formal presentation as, as it relates to what their organization was, what their organization was going to do, and how they, and explain to us their budgeting process, the individuals that were on their board, where they work, whatever establishment of measures they might have, and we also talked about how they fit into the ecosystem of Portsmouth United. Those, those presentations were held on July 16th, 17th, and 19th. My one regret is that we did not record those for transparency's sake. Going forward, we will ensure that that, that happens so that individuals know and can see those individuals and hear the presentations, so that we can again be more educated as a community. On July 30th, we began to finalize those applications and began announcing award letters to those CBOs. These are the 22 individuals that received funding, or groups that received funding in an amount of 1.6 million roughly in, in financial support from the grant. That's well over 60% of the funding that was allocated to the city. In addition to that, out of those funds, we also were required to hire a, a coordinator for the Portsmouth United, as well as fund some credible messenger's violence interrupter positions, which we're in the process of seeking individuals for now. One of the other things we also did as a result of the Bloomberg study is we're in the process of, that came out of that, is Bloomberg study said that it would be a good idea for us to put together a comprehensive app of where all of these services would live, so that we could get that information out to our city. Part of what we're going to- Part of what we're going to do with Portsmouth United is to actually fund that app and ensure that all of those community-based organizations and city organizations have a place to live so that people have the ability to access it from anywhere. And finally, we also took a portion of that money, and as a police department, we created a crisis stabilization program. Now, this is separate from a witness protection program. This is a program that we put forth that when we have individuals that we know who are receiving threats of acts of violence, who are victims of violence, or potential witnesses, we have the ability to be able to move those individuals temporarily and put them into a safer space to allow them to at least some downtime to be able to hopefully come up with a better situation for themselves. Recently, we even went as far as assisting a family to be able to relocate, but one thing we do ask, and I'll just be honest, we ask that they relocate out of the city. And that's for their own safety. It doesn't help if an individual relocates from Dale Home to up the street to one of our other neighborhoods relatively close. We need to put them in a safe environment where they have an opportunity to hopefully start over and maybe begin to flourish. So, we'll talk about the outcomes, the expected outcomes of Portsmouth United. So obviously, one of the major things is we want to reduce crime. You know, this is truly about, as Dr. Hayes said, if you're familiar with him, this is truly about an effort to save lives. Nothing more, nothing less. We're trying to galvanize every individual that has or wants to participate, whether you're a business, and we understand how this all affects what we're doing as a community. If we are having high crime rates, we're going to have a hard time attracting businesses. We're going to have a hard time attracting first-time homeowners and people who want to stay and contribute to the city of Portsmouth. So again, this ecosystem is built to be able to reduce crime rates, therefore increasing economic development, improving our school system, and all of those things associated with that. We also want to increase our community safety, improve relations with law enforcement. Obviously, we can't do this alone. We continue to say that. I continue to say it over and over, that we need the support of the community in order for us to do our jobs effectively. Behavior changes. We talk about it all the time. We really and truly want to give our youth an opportunity to be successful. I think we spend a lot of time talking about how bad our kids are. I don't think that's necessarily the issue. I think it's more so is we may not have given them a purpose. We may not have given them enough drive to be able, or enough reason to be able to do something. So again, there are opportunities within Portsmouth United, whether it be workforce development, whether it be the after-school programs or the mentorships, all of these things are geared towards helping do the behavioral changes. Enhance social networks. Again, I know we talked about, we have a tremendous amount of services, but the hard thing is about getting the information out to those individuals who need the services most. So we're working on making sure that we develop a comprehensive network to ensure that people know when they need help, where they need to go to. And ability to access the resources, youth engagement, economic improvement, victim support, and again, these are all the things that we're talking about, and again, ability to sustain communities. Measuring the success. Now, this is going to be the hard part. When we talk about violence interrupters, sometimes we get questions to say, "Well, what violence have they interrupted?" That's a hard question. It may be, the way you gauge it is if you have an individual that you know is working in the community, you gauge it by when's the last time you had an act of violence in that area. And that will be a more effective way to be able to determine their success. If they're doing their job and intervening in violent situations before they're happening, then it never makes it into a shooting. It never gets reported to the police department, and therefore, we don't see it on our streets. So again, we're going to be analyzing our crime rate. We're right now working on putting together a community-facing dashboard so that real-time citizens have the ability to be able to get updates on their area and the crime rate in their particular area. One of the things we just began to do, and you'll be able to see every Monday, is that we're going to be posting crime stats weekly, so that we can make sure that you're on top of that. You also have the ability through our P to C module on our website to be able to get updates on information for call for services, as well as arrests, wanted individuals, things of that nature. We're going to continue to do surveys and interviews with citizens. We're going to be doing interviews with our business owners and to gauge what their perception is. Again, sometimes the data doesn't necessarily marry up with the perception, and that's part of the problem that we face. Program participation metrics. We're going to ask our CBOs to begin to track those participants. How many kids are you servicing? Are they in school? Were they, before you got them, had they served any suspension? Do they have a criminal record? Any of these things that are going to be helpful to help us gauge whether or not their program is helping. So one of the things that we talked about, you'll see YMCA was, on Effingham Street, was one of our recipients. When we had conversation with them, I explained that they wanted to offer memberships. As I explained to them is based on where they are, if you're going to offer memberships, can we concentrate those memberships in South Side or in Prentice Park where those individuals desperately need an opportunity to be able to go to a rec center, maybe to escape to play some basketball, or get some other type of services? And so those are the ideas that we're having to focus our CBOs in the areas that we know that where the issues are mostly. Obviously, community feedback, partnership development is going to be crucial. As we talked about, behavioral changes, recidivism rates, how many of our kids and young adults are continuing to reoffend? Economic impact, are there any changes in health costs? Our medical institutions are going to play a huge role in this. A lot of community-based healthcare organizations, we're partnering with CHKD as well as Norfolk Centerra, to be able to make sure that their wraparound services for individuals that come into their facility to make sure that we're covering the gaps, and that's what this is about. We're trying to ensure that we cover the gaps as much as possible. Obviously, media coverage is going to be important, and then sustainability indicators. Are we going to be able to financially be able to keep this going? What other, are there other opportunities for businesses to be involved, to be able to support some of these CBOs and things of that nature? So, I want to introduce to you Ms. Chantel Matthews. Ms. Matthews is our new Portsmouth United Coordinator. She is going to be the front-facing of this. Again, I want y'all to, I keep saying it, this is not a police department-led initiative. This is something that the city is going to be leading the way. In addition to the Crime Commission that has been started, we're hoping that all of this will come together along with best practices and the ideas of everybody coming to the table. We need to bring our youth to the table and find out what they need and begin to fill in those spaces. So I'll give her a second.
So it's very nice to meet y'all officially. My name is Chantel Matthews. I've been in this role for just over two months. I came into a situation that things were already rolling, so I want to thank the chief for that. I didn't come into a situation where we're building necessarily from the ground up. And I'm just excited to be here. I am from Portsmouth. I live in Portsmouth. I love my city, and there's a lot of work to be done, but it is doable. We see over, throughout the country where cities are taking on this task, and when there's cooperation and synergy, we're able to get some good work done. So I know if other cities can do it, then we're more than capable as well. So I'm happy to be here and be the face of this initiative, and I'm ready to work. Thank you.
I do, chief. I have a couple of questions for Ms. Matthews, if you may. First of all, welcome, Ms. Matthews.
Yes, thank you.
It's a pleasure to see you, and welcome aboard. A couple of things. Have you looked at the Bloomberg Harvard Gun Violence Reduction Study?
Yes, sir. Yes, I have, and we are actually working toward getting some of those things that were recommended off the ground, one of them being the Portsmouth United app. So we're getting that started, because some of what I'm noticing is there's not a lack of resources, there's not a hub for people to go to to get to those resources. So that is one of my top priorities, and I've been working with the chief to get that rolling.
Right, because about over a year ago, we talked about the app. In fact, the focus group that we had, we had an example of an app, and I can send that to you if you would like it. It was from Chicago, and it's a full, integrated app, and they use it in their communities with their young people, number one. Number two, what I shared with my colleagues with this Crime Commission that we have stood up, I would recommend, and I'm asking you your opinion, because I know that you guys have done a lot of work with young people, is there value in adding perhaps a couple of young people to our Crime Commission?
Whenever you can incorporate the populations that you're attempting to serve and help and come alongside, I think there's value in getting their voices at that table. We can't work in silos, right? We have to bring them to the table and see what needs they have, because we can't assume their needs. So I would say there is definitely some value there.
And the last question I'll ask, because we do also have children with autism and special needs, I would ask your opinion on that. Is there value, I think there's value in that, because sometimes, particularly with our children with special needs, they may not present as other children do in a crisis situation. So perhaps having those, or one of those children represented would be helpful as well.
I agree, and I think the other piece is getting experts to the table when necessary to talk through like how some of those cues might be for kids who have, who present autistic cues and things like that, making sure we're taking all those things into account as we're starting to put, starting to get the work done. We don't want to leave anyone out. We want to be inclusive in how we are approaching our challenges.
Thank you so much, Ms. Matthews. And welcome aboard again, ma'am.
All right. Last thing, as a result, we also know that there is RFP out for solicitation as it relates to organizations that may be able to come in and offer some type of guidance for us as a city in setting up things like this. I have had some conversations with a few of them who are used to doing this type of work, but I also know that we are, they're pleased with where we are, but obviously have the ability to be able to come in and offer us some tailored approaches to us. What works in one city may not work in our city. There are no cookie cutter gun violence prevention, and we have to be realistic in what we're talking about. This is not going to change overnight. You know, this is a program that's going to take some hard work and dedication, and we have to expect some failures. We have to be honest about what we're talking about. We have to expect some failures with this and be able to ride the wave. But I think that this, and if we can recreate what is happening across the country in some of the places that have had this issue a lot longer than Portsmouth has, I think we can bear forth some good fruit and be able to change our climate as it stands right now and give our young folks a better opportunity to be successful. With that said, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, I didn't see it on the screen. I apologize, I didn't see it on the screen. Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor. And are these, okay. Mr. Moody, you have the floor. Then I think Dr. Whitaker.
Sorry, sir.
And then Councilman Hugo, who just showed up in a different place.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thanks for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
I like the kind of out-of-the-box approach. Got to do something different. But in looking at the micro grant awardees, how were they selected? Explain that process, and also, how will we determine whether the awardees are performing up to par, up to our expectations?
Yes, sir. So what we did was, once we received all of the applications, which we received about 23 specific applications, those applications ranged from the highest amount to, that was requested was $717,000 down to $5,000. So what we did was, based on the amount of money that we had, once we had individuals come in and give presentations, we made a determination that anything under $50,000 we would fund and hold. So that would be 100%. So any person that might have, that had a mentor program that was related to reading and working in a certain section, and their request was $5,000 for purchase of books and things of that nature, then we funded them 100%. As we started to dive into those above 100, that's when the matrix allowed us to start to separate that a little bit. Say 115 to 150 might have been 70%, then 50%, then 30%. So we funded all 20, we end up funding 22 of the 23. One of them actually was not a nonprofit. But we end up funding 22 of the 23 individuals in whole or in part based off of request. Now, you know, again, I've been in this city for a while. I understand, you know, how this works sometimes. So we were very direct in what we told them, what we would be expecting from them. One of them, which is quarterly reports, obviously as a grant, we have to respond to DCJS on a quarterly basis. So we're going to be very direct in receiving those quarterly reports. Ms. Matthews and myself and others will be attending these programs and doing spot checks. This is not just you go out and do good work. We want to make sure we're seeing the fruits of those work and doing spot checks, so they know that we are very much interested in the investment, because again, this is, just because it was given to the police department, this was city money that was utilized to develop these programs. And so we want to see these programs successful, but we also want to be very direct and understand that if we have a program in Brighton and Amory, we may not need two or three. We may need you better in Parkview, so we can begin to gauge how we do those services to all of the kids. And they're going to be providing those reports to us. In addition to that, we're also working to develop a matrix for ourselves as it relates to data. We want to be able to present to you and to the rest of council, this is what we had, this is what we did with the money, these are the successes that we had. We want to put together a comprehensive report so that we continue to build upon the momentum that hopefully Portsmouth United will give us.
I think it'd be good, too, to have a bio on some of the organizations. Obviously, YMCA, Friends of the Juvenile Court, most of us are very familiar with those organizations, but some on the list I've never heard of.
Yes, sir.
And acronym or two that, I don't know what that is, don't know what their mission is. How much total money was doled out to all the awardees?
Over 1.6 million.
Okay, so they got the whole 1.6?
No, sir. No, sir. So we didn't do it in that manner. Again, this is, we were very direct in what we were doing. No one was giving money all upfront. At best, they could get 50%. Again, if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, then they won't continue to be able to be, receive funding from this grant. They have to do their job and change, and then we'll do what we're supposed to do. Under normal circumstances, they will be, the grant is set up as a reimbursement. So funds that they spend, they'll have to come in and say, "This is what I spent, this is what I did, and then we will reimburse them for this." That is the way that most grants are set up. But we did make a mechanism, because the requirement by the state was that we fund new programs. So again, just because it's not something we heard from traditionally, the state said that we had to give new funding opportunities for people with ideas that were maybe not necessarily the traditional idea, to see what worked and what didn't work. And that's exactly what we did. But again, if they're not going to be doing the work, then we're not going to continue to fund them in whole or in part.
So who's going to oversee the accountability part?
Ms. Matthews. That's Ms. Matthews' job. Yes, sir.
Okay. And what part will our Crime Commission?
Hopefully, a big part. So in the perfect world, the Crime Commission would have been very So in the perfect world, the crime commission would have been very much an integral part, maybe even been the recipients of this. I would not tell you that the police department was the best place for this to land. However, it did land and we did what, what was mandated by the state to the letter. And so for that part, I'm very much proud of because we did what was required of us. We, and, and to be very direct, we're probably the only recipient of that money that has done what was required. And so we're far along past where some of our counterparts are as it relates to that. But we're hoping, my hope is that the crime commission will play a vital part in how we move forward with this. Again, this is a city-led initiative. We, as the chief, I want to be the police chief. And we'll let Ms. Matthews and the crime commission put forth best practices and we support those practices. But we also have an enforcement role that we have to play in our part of this. We want to support as much of we have of this as what we can, but we cannot shy away from our duties. There is a part of what we do as the police that is never going to change.
So you're handing off the responsibility, accountability to Ms. Matthews?
I, I can't hand off accountability or responsibility, I'm the chief. It landed in my, in my lap.
I'm talking about the monetary.
Yeah, absolutely, yes, sir. Yes, Ms. Matthews is in charge of Portsmouth United and the functioning of that. But I do have some, some say for like they're better of, along with the crime commission and things of that nature, on how, how we move forward. Again, we're trying to build a ecosystem for, for this.
When, when can we expect some bios on the micro grant awardees?
I can get them to you by next council. We've already provided some of that information to, yes, sir, provided that information. And again, as we build, get this app built out, every single person that goes on that app, again, they're part of, their part in this is we want to be able to refer services to them. We want to make sure that they are representative of the work that they're doing.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, Chief, the total amount that was awarded was 1.6. What was the total amount of the whole grant?
2.9 million, roughly, sir.
2.9, so the remaining amount that's still to be allocated?
Some of which, so again, we had a coordinator that we had to hire, which was a portion of that salary is all, also we had violence interrupters that we have to fund. In addition to, we set aside money for the crisis stabilization program. We set aside money for the building out of this app. And again, we are, are allowed to buy some police equipment with that. We have not determined as what, if anything, that will be at this point. One of the things that we are looking at is the ability to, to be able to give real-time surveys to citizens when they have encounters with officers, for us to have some level of accountability in that building of trust. When a person gets stopped by an officer or has an encounter or has a call for service, then that person will get a survey after that and then they will be able to get, let us know real time, what, how, how was the 911 dispatcher? How was the officer serviced? So again, we're trying to get better. And so we want to know about, you know, what our officers are doing and put us in the best position to be successful.
Right. Also, as you, as you know, crime is cyclical in nature. So when you mentioned about the intervenors and there being an indication of their success, that that will be shown by whether crime has decreased in those areas, that does not necessarily account for how crime occurs on a cyclical basis. Also, the Department of Criminal Justice Services, according to your handout for the Safer Communities Program, it said that these funds were to address the root causes and conditions of community violence.
Correct.
And listening to what the different strategies were, I'm not clear as to how they are addressing root causes because I know that much of the research shows that the root causes of crime deals with more socioeconomic conditions, people, living conditions, their income, housing. And so how does this program address root causes? Because just talking to people intervening, those do not address socioeconomic conditions. So how, how will this program address? And when we say address it, we're talking about usually you have to change the socioeconomic conditions of people in order for there to be some long-lasting change in crime.
Right. So when, when we're realistic about this whole approach and we're talking about bringing everybody to the table, crime commission, members of the police department, city council, all of our stakeholders. The crime commission's goal is to bring valuable intentions for the council to deliberate, to be able to set forth some of those, those things that you're talking about, that address root causes. Part of our, our mission here with Portsmouth United is, again, as folks with workforce development who are, have the ability to be able to plug individuals into jobs with maybe getting them some additional training or plugging them into a CDL training course or referring them over to TCC for some additional workforce development that will hopefully put them on a better path to be able to be a better earner or provide them some additional education. Also, our, part of our, our task is dealing with those folks that do have some trauma that they have not dealt with, those case managers. Again, the services are here. Part of the issue is a lot of times the service is not taken advantage of, for whatever reason. Whether it may be fear, whether it may be embarrassment, I really don't know. But one of the things that we have been very direct about is starting to take those services directly to where we know the people need them. It was just like when we did, we noticed today where yesterday we did a turkey giveaway in London Oaks and in four minutes, 100 turkeys were gone. Well, today we did it in South Side, but we weren't in South Side. We were on the corner and it took almost an hour. So when you look at the, the two things, the need was the same, but the location, because we're in different spots, the reality was different. So we're, again, we're hoping that by putting credible messengers who have the ability to go in and communicate to folks and say, hey, this is out here for you and it's okay for you to reach out and take it, we're hoping that more people will start to address those things. Those legislative things are that, that, that need to be addressed, that is, that's a whole nother conversation.
Yeah, the, the point, the point is, is that until we really, and it's not, it's not on you. It's not on you. But until there's a serious attempt at changing the status and quality of life of people, socioeconomic conditions, those are the things that will change crime and also we will see long-term results and not just the cyclical nature. So I, I hope that the monies that are here, that if we're going to really be aggressive about it, you're going to have to address the socioeconomic conditions of people, responding to crime. And that's typically what the police department is responding to crime. That's why, that's why I'm saying it's really not on you. And so I, I appreciate the presentation and the information. It's not cutting edge because it's still keeping people in their same economic status.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Hugo, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Chief, for the brief. So, Mr. Mayor, my intention later on in this agenda was to do a liaison report for the crime commission. If, with your permission, I'd like to do that now because it kind of fits in with the questions that Councilman Moody, Councilman Whitaker asked and also fits in with the discussion the chief led.
If I could, I, I will acknowledge that and I will give you permission to do that. But Vice Mayor Lucas Burke has been waiting patiently and I apologize, ma'am, I may have overlooked it before, but you have the floor and then I'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Jenkins, and nice to meet you, Ms. Matthews. With the information under the micro grant, the 24 awardees, is this going to be a recurring annual or quarterly application process? Or will it just be determined on the success or the measurable outcomes of the, of the community-based organizations?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. So we will be doing another round of grants and starting accepting. We will put the applications out in around March 2025 and we'll begin to solicit for, for those. So just because they got the grant this time doesn't mean they'll get it the next time. Again, we're going to put it out for individuals. We want the best, we want the best ideas. We want those individuals who are actually getting out, doing the work and doing what they can to change lives from their vantage point. Everybody has a role to play in building a comprehensive public safety environment.
Sure, I appreciate the information. I'm excited about seeing it roll out. Well, the community-based organizations, are they going to be responsible for recruiting the youth or the families that are going to be impacted? Or will the city help in that marketing or?
Yeah, so we're, we're going to be, in addition to us putting the information out, and obviously we'll make referrals. We're hoping that the schools will get on board and also make referrals. We have a number of them, of our CBOs who are actually in the schools already dealing with some of our children in some of the schools. And so we're, we're already in that process, but of course, we, we need more. We want to touch as many individuals as we can.
And the last question about the total grant amount, the 2.9 million. I know that was a state-funded grant. Is that recurring? Is it something we have to do to continue to ask for that in our legislative request? Or is it just ongoing?
So it was included in the governor's budget for, until next, next budget cycle. So we, we know we'll have at least another round and we'll see from there. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So city manager, Councilman Tillis, and I hosted the inaugural Crime and Gun Violence Reduction Task Force Monday before last. It was an organizational meeting. The group did get organized. Mr. Jalen Drury is the chair of that group now. Ms. Sheree Patillo is, was appointed vice chair. They accepted and agreed to the bylaws and, and understand the purpose that, that city council set that task force in motion. There are four standing committees as part of the organizational arrangement of the group. The first of those is community outreach. We thought important that we have a community outreach committee because we on the dais have non-agenda speakers, pretty much every city council meeting that come and, and talk to us about the crime issues and occasionally offer ideas on, on how we could, we could approach and make things, make things better. So our hope is that we can, we can send those folks who have their ideas to the community engagement committee and let them be the vetting of those good ideas and then ultimately make some decisions on which of those ideas merit implementation and perhaps merit coming back to city council to put some, some resources behind implementing those ideas. Secondly, there, we have a data and metrics standing committee. And as the chief said, there's, there's lots of data that the, that the police department already collects, but I think to Councilman Whitaker's earlier comment, this is more than a police department problem. So we need to get data on where the housing issues are, where the healthcare issues are, where the food issues are, the other issues that are socioeconomic issues that, that have to be addressed if we're going to be successful at getting to the systemic issues that are causing this problem. It's really, I think, at the crime task force level, not at the police department level, that we need to go after those issues. And so I think you correctly said, it's not the chief. It's, it's really the crime task force that's kind of taking that aboard as part of their bylaws. And it's not going to be easy. There's lots of data, but figuring out what data we need, how to use that data to inform the decisions that we're making and then what are the measures that we need to put in place? Not just crime stats, but what are the measures we need to put in place to understand, are we making progress on those systemic issues? Because the end of the day, if we don't make progress on those, then we're not going to, we're not going to make progress on reducing crime. The third standing committee is an intervention committee. So the chief and Ms. Matthews will be, are in the process of putting violence interrupters in place in, in some of our key neighborhoods. Intervention committee is intended to engage through Portsmouth United to get feedback from the violence interrupters back into the commission to help inform the, the work of the commission. And then finally, the fourth standing committee's resource allocation. So as I, as I mentioned at the kickoff meeting, my Pentagon training tells me a good idea without money is just a good idea. So we want to have the commission bring recommendations back to the city manager, back to city council on where we want to place our bets to make, make a difference. And some of that's going to possibly, probably require us figuring out where to adjust budget to, to, to make those, those investments and, and to do it in an equitable way so that we're, we're addressing where the problems are in the city that need that kind of help. Certainly, we had a long discussion during the kickoff meeting about the need for the crime commission and Portsmouth United to, to collaborate. Portsmouth United and the commission have a huge overlap in, in the things that, that have already been set in motion in Portsmouth United that, that now at least fall under the engagement of the, of the crime commission. Again, because Portsmouth United is going to see where some of these issues are, see where the grassroots organizations are having an effect. And, and I think Vice Mayor, to your point, at some point, when the state funding ends, we're still going to need to stick to it and, and continue to invest in, in those, those grassroots organizations that are having an impact and, and giving our kids healthy things to do. And so, so there's a, an important need to collaborate between Portsmouth United and the, the commission. And finally, the group decided that they're going to meet monthly, first Monday of the month. So the next meeting is Monday, the 2nd of December. So that's next Monday night, 6:00 PM, and they're meeting in the city council conference room. So I, I share that as kind of a soup to nuts on what happened a couple of Mondays ago. I think the commissioners walked away from the first meeting feeling like there's a good mixture of expertise amongst the commissioners. Everybody kind of brings different perspectives into those discussions. And I think that diversity amongst the commissioners is going to be critically important for, for them to succeed. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll give you the floor back.
Thank you, sir. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, to Council, Councilman Hugo's point regarding addressing the systemic issues to our city manager, you may want to go and review the poverty study that was done by the city with Old Dominion University because within that study, it identified some of the areas in the city that Councilman Hugo was referring to as far as the resources that are necessary. That was started by Old Dominion, however, it was not completed, but it should give some indication to some of those systemic issues.
You have the floor, Mr. Manager.
Thanks, sir. I'm not familiar with that study. Do you know how I can get my hands on it?
It should be, I believe it was somewhere between 2016 and 2018 that, that.
It's on the website, sir.
It's done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Oh, I did have one more question, ma'am, just very quickly for the chief. And that is the evaluation the state has provided, the grant funding. Was there an evaluation requirement within that grant funding?
So that's the problem, unfortunately. So they give, don't give a lot of direction. So, but we are working to make sure that, that we have an evaluation system that.
I was just curious if it was like a. I was just curious if it was like a third-party evaluator that they require.
No, sir. Not that I'm aware of as of right now. But they're still feeling their way through a lot of this.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You, Chief. Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Have one more presentation for this for you this evening. If Mr. Andy Nelson would make his way up or well, start talking about this. This is an opportunity for us. Actually, it's not a new program, as I've been told. It's a it's a longstanding program that we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to take advantage of. One of the things that I want to make sure that I do as my time as your City Manager is bring a package of benefits to our employees that they haven't had previously. My goal, and and as I talked to our team about this, is to it. I can't always monetarily award everything that's done, but I can make sure that they're aware that I understand money makes a difference in their lives. And what we're trying to do is is package a a a set of benefits around our employees and what and I wanted to be able to say it this way. The only way you can get this set of benefits is that you're a City employee. Meaning, we're going to do some things that make it valuable to carry that ID card. Not just, we we want to work on their pay and work on their standard of living and and make sure that they're well-trained, well-educated, but we're going to bring other opportunities to them that will make it just a valuable asset to have as that for that ID card. And this is one of the things that I'd like to introduce to you this evening. It's about a an opportunity for to help with homeownership. And I think that is a big key to making some differences in the crime prevention policies that we need to put forth. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Nelson if he will bring his team forward and 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 start the presentation. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, Council members. My name is Andy Nelson with Iron Valley Real Estate. I'm excited to be here with you this evening. And and as I've sat through both the working session and so far this evening, I I've heard a common theme, and I think what we have with this package, as as Mr. Carter mentioned, will help with with some of the issues that we've heard. I also have with me Katie Brinson. Katie is local. You want to give your?
Yeah, I don't have to do it for you. Good evening. Thank you guys for your time today. My name is Katie Brinson. I am a branch leader with Movement Mortgage, and I am often working with many of your City employees. I'm very excited to see you all in person today.
All right. Thank you, Katie. Is this how this works? There we go. All right. So, this idea was 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 initially born. I work with Iron Valley Real Estate. We're primarily veteran-owned brokerage, and the majority of our both clients and agents are military-affiliated one way or another. And we started looking into the idea around homeownership for people who aren't veterans in our community. Although it is a big portion of our population, so many of us are not military-related. And we found a ton of programs for first responders. There's, you know, medical employees, police officers, fires. There's a lot of programs for those people as well. And I thought about, what about the the treasurer that that takes payments or the clerk that takes payments at the treasurer's office? There's no program for that person or the person that works for the city library. There's no homeownership program for the librarian. And I felt like that was a severely underserved community. So, I reached out to Katie. Katie's a certified instructor instructor with Virginia Housing Authority. And Katie brought to my attention some of these programs that already exist, and that's what we wanted to bring to you all today. So, this proposal outlines a comprehensive initiative aimed at enhancing the financial literacy and housing knowledge of City employees specifically, at least with the first iteration. Our mission is is to enhance the financial health of City employees by educating them on not only homeownership opportunities, but just budgeting and financial health in general. Ultimately, we've got this this plan in place that we'd like to bring to the to the public because we feel like it is not being utilized as much. As I mentioned, my name is Andy. This is Katie. We also have a couple of our members, Jasmine Young and Jason Dunaway. Jason serves on the Government Affairs Committee with the Hampton Roads Realty Association, and Jasmine is a commissioner with the Portsmouth Downtown Design Committee, as well as president of the Waterview Civic League. The target audience for this for this initiative right now is City employees, particularly those with an interest in homeownership, first-time homebuyers, or individuals seeking financial education and/or. And our objectives would be to educate these employees on budgeting strategies, home-buying resources, including grant programs and financial assistance. So, it's like, okay, Andy, get to the point, right? We're talking grant programs and financial assistance. That's what we're really here to talk about today. We want to facilitate the engagement and use of those grants through education, and that's why we're here. And I'll let Katie talk a little bit about the grant as well. So, the grant we're talking about today is called Come Home to Portsmouth. This is a grant that is already in place. It is being underutilized. And Katie, I'll let you talk about that.
Good evening. So, this grant is actually administered through HRPDC. And I know many of you work very closely there, and Shanita Bethia is one of the administrators there. And the problem that we are encountering in our community is that many people don't think that this money is real, right? How many times have you gone online and you see click here for grant information, and then your phone gets blown up? So, that's problem number one. Problem number two is that many people don't realize how easy it is to qualify for these grants, especially because you can work together with Virginia Housing. The minimum credit score is 620, and most people don't know that. They think it has to be much higher. The other thing is that these programs are accessible to all people, right? We're not limited, like many other programs, to a particular neighborhood or a particular zip code. This program can be used anywhere in the city. Or if they choose for some reason to go outside of the city, they can still couple with Virginia Housing as long as they're partnering with HRPDC. What we have found, though, I was able to get some statistics from Mr. Jeffrey Kimer, is that these grants have been incredible. Just in the last 12 months, they've administered grants to multiple people ranging from $19,000 all the way over $30,000 in down payment assistance funds. The only thing that the buyer has to do is contribute 1% of the sales price. The average sales price is around $200,000. That means for $2,000 out of pocket, City employees can get into their own home in their own community. And we partner with Virginia Housing in addition, which means we can stack the state grant on top of this. So, they have a 2.5% or 2% additional down payment assistance grant. And if you're a veteran, we can even add on a 2% closing cost assistance grant on top of that. And we can also partner with federal agencies. So, FHLB has up to $15,000 for those who qualify. You can stack all of these things together, and most people have no idea. Unfortunately, many of the lenders in our community don't work with Virginia Housing or they think it's too much paperwork. I think it's just something that people need to know about because it's actually very accessible.
So, it's free money. It's not free, but at least we're not asking, you know, the City of Portsmouth to contribute to this. So, like like Katie said, it is administered by HRPDC. And then in terms of the way the process would actually work, is we would like to host a workshop. So, that's what Katie, myself, and our team are here for. We would like to present this information in a package to City employees. Because much like the the toll relief program that we heard about in the work session, it's not being pushed out to the to the public enough. The public doesn't realize that this thing's even happening. Much like the the Portsmouth United, it's the app. We need to congregate. We need these things. We need the message to get out to the public. And that's what we would like to do. We would like to bring this message to the City employees first, thus creating essentially the circular economy. If you've got City employees that are being paid salaries by City tax dollars, and then they own property in that city, they shop, they eat, they play in that city, all of this money becomes circular. And it keeps that money right here in the City of Portsmouth versus, you know, someone working for the City of Portsmouth and buying a home in Chesapeake or Suffolk or leaving the area and taking their tax dollars with them. So, the next steps for us realistically is how we get this message out to the City employees. So, we're looking for a partnership with the city. I have a background in marketing. Mr. Carter and I discussed possibly implementing the city's marketing department and putting this together. So, we're not really asking for a lot. We're asking for a partnership in a way that we get this message out to the people. Literally, we are asking for no money. We have partners on board from insurance, title companies, home inspectors who are also willing to contribute, whether it be a discount or a program that helps see helps this process be seen through to the end. Next steps, we really just need confirmation of City support. We're ready to go. We've got resources in place in terms of hosting the workshop. We'd actually like to do it right here at Bloom, right down the street because we want to keep everything local right here in the City of Portsmouth as much as we can. We are willing to work nights and weekends to accommodate everyone's different schedules. We understand people work different schedules. And and we're ready really to launch this program with with the City's support in partnership with the city. Questions?
Thank you, sir. Our first, Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor, then Dr. Whitaker and Councilman Hugo.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say thank you for your presentation. I definitely think it's a great initiative, a great program, especially when we're trying to encourage homeownership, but also a way to make sure that our employees have that benefit and the security of being able to afford a home. And then also having them to live in their community in which they work. I think that's a great initiative. My only concern is when we look at the the eligibility requirements. And I think when you look at why the program is underutilized is when we look at the income requirements. For, the way it is written now is for a person of family of one, $47,350. When you do the math to do 30% of your income for what you can afford, you're looking at about 11, well, excuse me, $1,183 a month for a mortgage. However, when we look at today's economy, the average house in Portsmouth in the month of October sold at $266,000 with a 6.3% interest rate. And with a 13% down payment, that mortgage would be $2,250. And so, a person that's making $47,000, you're looking at that's six, almost 60% of their income. So, I would challenge Council to let's revisit these eligibility requirements to work alongside H, I mean, the HRPDC to look at these income levels. Because if you look at the average house right now at $266,000 with a 6.3% interest rate, that's $2250 a month. That means a person of one would need to make $87,000 to be able just to afford 30% of their income. And so, if we're, you know, we're talking about home affordability and access to housing, those are some real some real needs. And, you know, our City employees also are people that are married, people that have children. And so, you know, let's just talk about a family of four. If a City employee is married, has two kids, there's a possibility they're making more than $67,000 in that household. And so, you know, we we really need to revisit these things to make sure that housing is accessible to everybody. Affordability means something different to everybody. But if we can at least start with that baseline of looking at the actual numbers of what a house actually costs in today's economy, I think that this would really be beneficial to helping to build generational wealth for people that are challenging, that have that challenge right now of trying to afford a house. And then also helping to just uplift our community. And when people are able to purchase houses, they're going to take pride in their in their property. They're going to take pride in their city. And so, if we can look at trying to get these numbers to 2024's realistic numbers, I think that would be very beneficial.
I think Katie wanted to add something.
Yeah, I can actually answer that for you. So, I think everybody who works with these programs recognizes that those numbers are unrealistic. You cannot feed a family on $40,000, especially if you have kids or boys who eat all day long. And so, one of the challenges, and Ms. Bethia and I have had this conversation, is that those income limits are set by HUD, right? HUD is actually partially responsible for funding HRPDC. However, if we encounter a City employee who is outside of these income limits, there's still an excellent chance that they're going to qualify for Virginia Housing. The income limit for Virginia Housing for a household of two to get a grant is $85,000. That's much more reasonable. You can go zero down, up to $100,000. And actually, you can be a repeat homebuyer and go zero down anywhere in the City of Portsmouth and make $152,000 and put no money down. So, while I absolutely adore this program, I do recognize it doesn't, it's not one-size-fits-all. You're absolutely correct. Additionally, HUD is looking to increase the income limits. They do reevaluate AMI every single year. Now, when they put that out, it's whenever they feel like it. I think we all kind of know that. But I know we all recognize that there's a massive problem with housing affordability, and you're exactly right. I mean, one of the other benefits, though, is that many of these programs do come with additional Spark Funds, and I don't know if you've ever heard of those before. Yeah, so Spark Funds are additional funds that are paid to Virginia Housing to buy down the interest rate on the loan a full percentage point for the life of the loan. For the average client, that's about $120 a month savings. So, we can couple these programs together, and we recognize that not everybody fits into every box, but thankfully, we have multiple boxes. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I want to thank Councilman Tillage for that analysis. Also, for our City City Manager, as you look to enroll this, just a couple of questions. The Iron Valley Real Estate Company, are we hearing from them as a result of an RFP? Or exactly how did they come to be the entity that's presented?
Mr. Carter, you have the floor.
I'm sorry. Thank you. No, there are no contractual things. They're presenting the program. You don't have to use Iron Valley. They're the ones who's presenting the program. So, there there's no contractual relationship with us and and that realty realty agency at this time. So, no, there hasn't been an RFP. There have not been any contract. This is just someone that's going to present how the program works.
Okay. And as you push it out, considering what it entails as far as who it can help, should this be something that goes beyond just the City employees as far as marketing this out?
Actually, sir, I think this is really available to anybody. We're just, because I'm representing the city, I'm trying to get the city on, you know, naturally. I'm like, I'm interested in the whole city, but I'm really interested in making sure that our employee base have what they need. But this isn't a City of Portsmouth employee-only program. If you're a City of Portsmouth resident, you still can participate in these programs.
Right. That's that's why I was curious if that should be something that should be pushed to the broader community, considering we have seen earlier, we have a very large ALIS population, and that would be something, you know, worthwhile.
Oh, absolutely. We want everybody that, we want everybody in Portsmouth to have a home. You know, so this is not, we won't limit this to anyone. Anybody that is willing and eligible, we want them to participate, and we'll help them through the process to make sure that they are ready to participate.
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, I'll admit my ignorance. Is Come Home to Portsmouth program funding HUD funding or City of Portsmouth funding? Or neither?
Yeah, sorry. So, it's actually a mixture. It comes from the state and the federal government. Primarily, it's backed by HUD. That's the income limit.
Okay, so the eligibility requirements that you have on slide whatever are HUD requirements?
That's correct, yes.
So, HUD requires that they have to buy a home in Portsmouth?
No. So, each city through HRPDC has its own particular allocation. So, the presentation tonight is based strictly on those wishing to buy a home in Portsmouth. HRPDC does serve other cities, but we were focusing on Portsmouth this evening.
Okay, and so, the the income structure that that Councilman Tillage was was pointing out, we don't have any flexibility. Those are HUD numbers?
I wish we did, yes. And HUD does income limits by MSA, Metropolitan Statistical Area. So, the vast majority of these limits are going to apply to all seven cities. I wish. I mean, we're all kind of in the same boat. Thankfully, you know, VHDA, they're a little bit more generous on the income limits. We definitely recognize the gap.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any City employees or residents of Portsmouth already taking advantage of this program?
So, unfortunately, for client privacy reasons, we're not allowed to disclose. I can say to you that if you look at the homeownership list.
You know, 100?
I have worked with many clients that work for the City of Portsmouth, yes. But the total number of grants given out last year was only 12, but they ranged from $19,000 to over $30,000. Which, I mean, the average sale price is $199,000 for those programs, which is more than 10% down, and you can move funds over for closing costs.
How how is the program marketed? Because I dare say that very few people are aware of it. And I'm glad the City Manager has enlightened us by inviting y'all here tonight. How's how you find out about it if if y'all weren't here?
People like us, honestly. And I'll be quite honest. There are, you know, people in our industry who feel like it's just too much to bother with. You know, typically, the clients are lower income. It takes longer to get them under contract. The sale prices are lower, and, you know, we all work on commission, right? So, I'm going to be honest, it really is just dependent upon who wants to promote it. Now, HRPDC, you know, they do the best that they can with promoting it, but everybody has a limited marketing.
has a limited marketing budget.
So any realtor would know about this program?
They should.
And the reason why I say, because I have a real estate license and...
Never heard of it.
I've never heard of it.
Never heard of it. Never heard of it. Well, like I said in the opening, it started because I was wondering what programs were available. And even as a realtor, I had to go research and find, and I called several loan officers who all said, you know, I'll kick in $1,000 bucks in my commission to help them out. That's all they could do. And then I called Katie, and Katie's like, wait a minute, we've got, you know, $30,000 available for these people. So it's a limited number of people that are aware of it, and I think that's where the largest problem lies, is we're just not getting the message out to the people.
And what is the budget? Does HUD limit a budget amount for this program, or is it unlimited?
I wish it was unlimited. So it actually depends. It's a recurring line item on the HUD budget, just like FHLB is a recurring line item. And so every year, it's one of those things where it's just, it gets funded with whatever it gets funded. However, if you talk to HRPDC, thankfully, they've never said no to any grant that's ever been requested because there's not enough people out there requesting them, which is another reason to get the program out there, because what we don't want to do is HUD to be like, oh, you're not using this money. We want to make sure that it stays here.
And are the rates adjusted according to the CPI on an annual basis, or...
Great question. So you mean the interest rate for the mortgage?
Yes.
Everything that we do is a 30-year fixed mortgage. HRPDC is very clear, you cannot do anything with any kind of prepayment penalty whatsoever. It is a prevailing market rate, and it's also based on the program. So for example, a veteran is going to get a very different interest rate than somebody using, say, FHA or conventional financing.
Right. Very good. Thanks for the presentation. Very enlightening.
Just to follow up on Councilman Hugo's question about the funding, does this have anything to do with the community development block grant funds that we get?
We get community development block grants, and some of those are through HUD, but this particular program is not that. Yeah, we have our own allocation for that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilman Tillage?
Thank you, Mayor. So my question would be, well, when we were in Chicago, we went to Chicago for a conference this summer, and they were talking about affordable housing and what the city of Chicago is doing to advance that. And so what they have done is their locality has kind of pitched in money, but they used some of the pandemic relief money to be able to do that. Have y'all seen any localities that you all have worked with, maybe not just in Hampton Roads, but maybe in the Commonwealth, where they're using their HUD allocation, but this locality is also providing funding as an additional resource to allow more people to participate to kind of move around some of those requirements?
Yeah, so Norfolk has its own grant as well. They have up to $60,000. That is a separate program outside of HRPDC. I'm from the DC area, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with ADUs, Affordable Dwelling Units. So Loudoun County, Fairfax County, and Prince William have an ADU program, and that is a little bit different. Basically, what it is, is a developer creates, say, a condo complex, and they commit to making 10% of those affordable dwellings. You can then partner with a third-party agency like a VHDA or like a Prince William Housing Authority or Community Development Agency, and there's a subsidy there. So the builder is being made whole. The client, I just did one in Ashburn, it was an $800,000 condo, and my client got it for $300,000. And so those programs do exist. I think the difficulty is, A, finding a template that everybody can agree on, and B, making it applicable to the local community, because we are not Loudoun County.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both for the presentation. I guess my question is, once the person is into the eligibility requirements and they find a home, I know that the housing stock is limited, you know, what happens if you can't find a match? Somebody's really looking and can't find a home?
So they actually are allowed to shop for around 90 days. HRPDC is very generous. They will hold the money for the client, and they're fairly flexible. There's not often a waiting line, if you will. Often, for Spark funds, there are, but for these grants, they do allow some flexibility because they recognize that it takes a while to get under contract in that price point, so they are pretty flexible.
And I would also just add, from a real estate perspective, we're seeing increasing inventory every day. And to be quite frank, Portsmouth is number seven of the seven cities in terms of sales and sales price. So I think it stands to benefit the most from a program like this.
Right. And is there any type of continuous education and support throughout the person's time in the program? Because sometimes people need help with...
Agreed. So our approach is a little bit different. So I'm a qualified trainer with Virginia Housing, so if people want that grant, they have to come to somebody like me to get the education upfront. HRPDC does require the Virginia Housing, but they also partner with HUD, community-based budget counselors. So they actually have to fill out a complete budget worksheet, they have to sign off on it, they must use after-tax dollars, they have to budget it. Like, when they come to my class, we talk about how much are your haircuts?
Right.
Right? Like, you have to do that. So from an ongoing support perspective, the upfront work is highly intensive because it acts as a filter, to be honest. It's a filter. If you're not serious enough to fill out your budget worksheet, you're not ready for a home. And then ongoing support, I can't speak for every loan officer or lender, but my clients are always encouraged to call me. We do an annual review of the mortgage. We talk about, do you need to refinance? What do your property taxes look like this year? Your escrow is going to change. What is your homeowner's insurance? Like, homeowner's insurance is dropping left and right for people. So we can't speak for everybody, but we act as lifetime consultants for our clients.
Thank you.
I'll vouch for that. She was my loan officer two and a half years ago, and we're standing here together, so...
I appreciate it. Best of wishes.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Well, thank you both for the presentation. I'm sure there'll be questions to follow up and follow through, and...
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all.
So that concludes our work session items. Are there any liaison reports at this time? Seeing none, this work session is adjourned. We will reconvene at 7:15 with our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Thank you.